Good evening, everyone. It's 7:30 and this is a regular scheduled meeting of the Bangor City Council. And at this point, as we always do, we start off with a pledge of allegiance. If I could ask you to please rise. And if I could have the city engineer read us off, that would be great. Thank you, John. So this is a portion of the meeting we set aside for comments from the public. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak on a subject other than what's on the regular agenda, they may do so by coming to the podium, stating their name and address and delivering their message. So any inappropriate or offensive remarks, they may be removed. And the council chair will have discretion over the time allowed for comment. The story, what I've been doing since the beginning of the year is limiting it to three minutes of public comment. With that being said, come right up. Right now, right, right up here to the podium. Is there any public comment? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ryan Robbins. I live at 201 Hudson Avenue, otherwise known as Bradford Commons. Bradford Commons is a 194-unit apartment complex with a mix of market rate, Section 8, and other low-income apartments. Ten apartments are ADA accessible. In 2021 and 2022, Bradford Commons underwent a $4.6 million rehabilitation. The 10 ADA apartments were completely gutted and rebuilt, including electrical wiring and plumbing. The contractor, Portland Builders, paid the city of Bangor almost $22,000 for the building permit. A building permit fee is to cover the city's costs to inspect the work at each stage of construction. During the course of the 20-month project, Bangor Code Enforcement Office visited the site a total of zero times. That's zero times. Code enforcement officer Jeff Wallace was made aware, almost eight months into the project, that the contractor was not installing properly exterior insulation that was also serving as a water-resistant barrier. He was made aware that the contractor was not flashing windows properly. He was made aware of property maintenance issues that had caused the buildings to experience severe rot to structural elements. Yet he didn't visit the site a single time, not once. Mr. Wallace had a legal obligation to inspect the work. He refused, and he continues to refuse. His excuse: "We received no calls requesting an inspection." That is an exact quote from his January 6th email this year to me. "We have a growing demand for affordable housing, and Bangor's code enforcement officer has told contractors they can do whatever they want. Don't want to follow the building and life safety codes? Just don't ask for an inspection. Cut corners all you want." There are 10 ADA apartments that are occupied without having their electrical or plumbing systems inspected. They have no certificates of occupancy. Mr. Wallace acknowledges this, but he refuses to do his job. In December 2021, he misled the main state housing authority into believing that he had been inspecting the work. Last month, he told his boss, Ann Krieg, that code enforcement had inspected the work and found no violations. That was not a truthful statement. I am asking that the city council investigate code enforcement's mishandling of the Bradford Commons project, in particular, Mr. Wallace's refusal to carry out his statutory duties. I will be emailing you additional information tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan, and thank you for bringing this up. Appreciate it, and we will look into it. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Mike Sanzales. I live at 380 College Avenue, Orono. I'm here on behalf of the Alpha Sigma Phi fraternity from University of Maine. We'll be hosting a trunker tree on Tuesday, October 24th, at the University of Maine at the Alfon Arena. And my goal tonight is to branch it beyond Orono, so I felt Bangor would be a good spot to reach out to, and I feel like the city council would be a perfect spot to go to. So I have flyers here. All our funds that we raised from this trunker tree, it's free admission, but we have donations, raffles, and snacks we're selling. All that money will be going to Active Minds, which is a mental health network. So I have flyers if you guys would like to see.
Thank you, Mike. Counselor Tremble.
I say the school department, do they meet here tomorrow night at this time? If you might want to address them as well, the school department meets here tomorrow night at the same time. Is it seven? Seven tomorrow night, right here, yeah.
Yeah, it's tomorrow at seven.
Okay, same spot? Well, yeah, thank you. But yeah, I just wanted to spread the word, get more people to come. My goal is to make it the biggest we've had it since our third time doing it. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, I see nobody on Zoom. We'll move on with the consent agenda.
Minutes of Bangor City Council Regular Meeting of September 25th, 2023, Government Operations Committee meetings of April 3rd, 2023, and April 19th, 2023. Liquor license renewals, application for liquor license renewal malt wine spirits of Dice Art Service, doing business as Dice Arts, 1110 Broadway, application for liquor license renewal malt wine spirits of Texas Roadhouse Holdings LLC, doing business as Texas Roadhouse, 504 Stillwater Avenue, application for liquor license renewal malt wine spirits of Judy's Restaurant, doing business as Judy's Restaurant, 125 State Street, application for liquor license renewal malt wine of some theater company LLC, doing business as some theater company, 557 Stillwater Avenue, application for liquor license renewal malt wine spirits of China Harbor Restaurant, Inc., doing business as China Harbor Restaurant, 547 Main Street, application for liquor license renewal malt wine spirits of Tesaro Restaurant LLC, doing business as Tesaro's, 118 Harlow Street, application for liquor license renewal malt wine spirits of HC Bangor LLC, doing business as Hollywood Casino Hotel and Raceway, 500 Main Street. 23-302 Order Authorizing the Execution of a Municipal Quick Claim Deed for Real Estate Located at 15 Royal Road. 23-303 Order Amending the Schedule of Fees by Adding Inland Fisheries and Wildlife Agent Fee. 23-304 Order Authorizing the City Manager to Sell City Lot R11-011-A to Abutting Property Owner Dwayne Williams for $3,005. 23-305 Order Authorizing the Execution of a Contract with Sargent Corporation in the amount of $373,450 for the de-icing stormwater treatment Phase III project at the airport. 23-306 Order Authorizing an Amendment to the Employment Agreement of City Clerk Lisa Goodwin.
I move passage of the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Seeing no doubts. The consent agenda has passage. Referrals to committees and first reading.
23-307 Ordinance Amending the Code of the City of Bangor by Creating Regulations and Allowances for Emergencies, Emergencies Shelters, First Reading and Referral to Planning Board Meeting on October 17th, 2023. 23-308 Ordinance Amending the Code of the City of Bangor by Creating Regulations and Allowances for Short-Term Rentals, First Reading and Referral to Planning Board Meeting of October 17th, 2023. 23-309 Ordinance Amending Chapter 165 Land Development Code District Map to Rezone Property Located at 727 Broadway from Contract Shopping and Personal Service District, SMPS, to Shopping and Personal Service District, SMPS, Without Contract Overlay, First Reading and Referral to Planning Board Meeting on October 17th, 2023. 23-310 Ordinance Amending Chapter 165 Land Development Code District Map to Rezone Property Located at 743 and 759 Broadway from Contract Shopping and Service District, SMPS, to Shopping and Personal Service District, SMPS, Without Contract Overlay, First Reading and Referral to Planning Board Meeting on October 17th, 2023. 23-311 Ordinance Amending Chapter 165 Land Development Code District Map to Rezone Property Located at 1192 Ohio Street from Rural Residents and Agricultural District, RRNA, to the Neighborhood Service District, NSD, First Reading and Referral to Planning Board Meeting on October 17th, 2023. 23-312 Ordinance Amending Chapter 165 Land Development Code District Map to Rezone Property Located on Ohio Street from Urban Residents 1 District, URD 1, and Rural Residents and Agricultural District, RRNA, to Low Density Residential, LDR. First Reading and Referral to Planning Board Meeting on October 17th, 2023. 23-313 Ordinance Amending Chapter 177 Article 2 Retail Marijuana, Section 177-7 by adding Section 177-7K to clarify that retail marijuana establishments may not transact sales of adult-use cannabis or cannabis products at off-site specified events, First Reading. 23-314 Resolve Accepting and Appropriating $20,478,297 in State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, AKA ARPA, First Reading. 23-315 Resolve Appropriating $11,000 from the Federal Seizure Trust Account for the Purpose of Purchasing Fitness Equipment, First Reading.
I move these items be referred?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. If there are no objections, these items will be referred. Unfinished business.
23-294 Ordinance Amending Chapter 23 Boards, Committees, Commissions, Section 23-37 by Allowing the City Council Committee to Request a Meeting of the Downtown Parking Advisory Committee, Counselor Tremble.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Chairman, I would move the passage of ordinance 23-294. This ordinance amends Chapter 23 Boards, Committees, Commissions, Section 23-37 by Allowing a City Council Committee to Request a Meeting of the Downtown Parking Advisory Committee. The Downtown Parking Advisory Committee, a seven-member committee, is authorized to review the city's parking resources, prices, and fees and policy as they relate to on-street and off-street parking in the Downtown Parking Management District and make recommendations regarding the same with the city council and its appropriate committees. As currently written, a meeting will occur when requested by the committee chair or by the city council. It does not allow for parking items to be referred to the committee by a city council committee. Currently, oversight of parking management falls to Community and Economic Development Committee. As such, parking-related items are typically reviewed by the Business and Economic Development Committee. This amendment will allow the appropriate council committee to refer items to the Downtown Parking Advisory Committee. This was reviewed and recommended for passage at the Business and Economic Development Committee meeting on September 18th.
We have a motion, we have a second. Questions, comments? Seeing none, where this is a ordinance, roll call vote.
Counselor Davitt?
Yes.
Counselor Pelletier?
Yes.
Counselor Spring?
Yes.
Counselor Tremble?
Yes.
Counselor Yakabaga?
Yes.
Counselor Fornia?
Yes.
Six yes, zero no.
Ordinance 23-294 will have passage.
23-295 Ordinance Amending Chapter 165 Land Development Code by Adding the Use of Permanent Supportive Housing as a Conditional Use in the Low Density Residential, LDR, High Density Residential, HDR, and Multifamily and Service District, MNSDs Zones, First Reading and Referral to Planning Board. Well, that shouldn't be there, but Counselor Davitt.
Thank you. I move passage of ordinance 23-295.
Second.
This ordinance will amend Chapter 165 Land Development Code by Adding the Use of Permanent Supportive Housing as a Conditional Use in Low Density Residential, LDR, High Density Residential, HDR, and Multifamily and Service District, MNSD Zones. The proposed change would update the city's land development code to add the use of permanent supporting of housing as a conditional use in the LDR, HDR, and MNSD Zones. A council ordinance was adopted on October 24th, 2022 to find this use, and it added it as a conditional use to the Government and Institutional Service District, GNISD Zone. This use is similar to transitional housing because there are staff available for support services to residents, but it differs in that the residents may reside there permanently. It is not the same as group homes or other congregate care as defined, as the people reside in efficiency units and thus have more independence. The use is defined as "a multifamily building or multiple buildings on a lot that contain permanent project-based supportive housing which are funded with project-based vouchers and associated services to residents." This proposal aligns with the 2022 Comprehensive Plan, which supports revisions to zoning regulations to remove barriers to development for a variety of housing types, including single-room occupancy housing, tiny homes, and transitional housing. The proposed dimensional controls, including minimum lot size and set packs, follow the requirements for attached residential developments, townhouses, and congregate care housing. This item was reviewed and unanimously recommended for approval by the planning board at its meeting on October 3rd, 2023.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, where this is again another ordinance, roll call vote.
Counselor Davitt?
Yes.
Counselor Pelletier?
Yes.
Counselor Spring?
Yes.
Counselor Tremble?
Yes.
Counselor Yakabaga?
Yes.
Counselor Fornia?
Yes.
Six yes, zero no.
Ordinance 23-295 will have passage.
23-296 Ordinance Correcting Typographic Errors in Council Ordinance 23-141 voted on and passed on May 22nd, 2023, which amended Chapter 165 Land Development Code to clarify the protections, allowances, and restrictions for non-conforming uses, structures, and lots, Counselor Davitt.
Thank you. I move passage of ordinance 23-296.
Second.
Thank you. This ordinance amendment will correct typographical errors in Council Ordinance 23-141, passed on May 22nd, 2023, the purpose of which was to clarify protections, allowances, and restrictions for non-conforming uses, structures, and lots.
We have a motion, we have a second. Questions, comments? Seeing none, again, this is an ordinance, roll call vote.
Counselor Davitt?
Yes.
Counselor Pelletier?
Yes.
Counselor Spring?
Yes.
Counselor Tremble?
Yes.
Counselor Yakabaga?
Yes.
Counselor Fornia?
Yes.
Six yes, zero no.
Ordinance 23-296 has passage.
23-297 Resolve Authorizing the City Manager to Accept and Appropriate $406,222 for the Supplemental Nutrition Education Grant Program from the University of New England, Counselor Pelletier.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Move passage of 23-297. This order authorizes the city manager to accept and appropriate $406,222 from the University of New England for a one-year period beginning October 1st, 2023. This will constitute a sixth-year extension to a five-year grant cycle to provide nutrition education to SNAP-eligible residents of Penobscot and Piscataquis Counties. These are federal funds passed from USDA through Maine's Office of Family Independence to the University of New England, who manages the SNAP education program statewide. Bangor Public Health has been administering the SNAP education programs locally since 2012. This item was reviewed and recommended for approval by the Government Operations Committee on October 2nd, 2023.
We have a motion, we have a second. Questions, comments? Seeing none, resolve 23-297 has passage. New business.
Public Hearing Application for Special Amusement License Renewal of Tesaro's Restaurant LLC, doing business as Tesaro's, 118 Harlow Street, Counselor Davitt.
Thank you. I feel like this is a going-away present. You guys get to hear me read a bunch of these. So I move that we open the public hearing for application special amusement license renewal for Tesaro's Restaurant LLC, DBA at Tesaro's, 118 Harlow Street.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The public hearing, oh.
Public hearing is now open.
Seeing no one approach, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Public hearing is closed.
Thank you. I move passage of application for special amusement license renewal of Tesaro's Restaurant LLC, DBA Tesaro's, 118 Harlow Street.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Questions, comments? Seeing none, the application will have passage.
Public Hearing Application for Special Amusement License Renewal of Dice Art Service, doing business as Dice Arts, 1110 Broadway, Counselor Davitt.
Thank you. I move to open the public hearing for the application for special amusement license renewal of Dice Art Service, DBA Dice Arts, 1110 Broadway.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Public hearing is now open.
Seeing no one approach, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Public hearing is considered closed.
Thank you. I move passage of the application for special amusement license renewal of Dice Art Service, DBA Dice Arts, 1110 Broadway.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Questions, comments? Seeing none, the application will have passage.
Public Hearing Application for Special Amusement License Renewal of HC Bangor LLC, doing business as Hollywood Casino and Raceway, 500 Main Street, Counselor Davitt.
Thank you. I move to open the public hearing for application of special amusement license renewal of HC Bangor LLC, DBA Hollywood Casino, and Raceway, 500 Main Street.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Public hearing is now open.
Seeing no one approach, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. The public hearing will be considered closed.
Thank you. I move passage of the application for special amusement license renewal of HC Bangor LLC, DBA Hollywood Casino and Raceway, 500 Main Street.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Questions, comments? Seeing none, the application will have passage.
Public Hearing Application for Special Amusement License Renewal of Evan Roots, doing business as Evan Roots, 25 Broad Street, Counselor Davitt.
Thank you. I move to open the public hearing for this application for special amusement license renewal of Evan Roots, DBA Evan Roots, 25 Broad Street.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion, we have a second. Public hearing is open.
And seeing no one approach, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Public hearing is now closed.
Thank you. I would move passage of application for special amusement license renewal of Evan Roots, DBA Evan Roots, 25 Broad Street.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. The application is considered passed.
23-316 Order Authorizing the Award of $350,748 in State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds to Support Renovation of the Bangor Children's Home, Counselor Davitt.
Thank you. I move passages of order 23-316.
Thank you.
This order will authorize the award of $350,748 in State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, AKA ARPA funds, to Bangor Children's Home to undertake interior and exterior renovations to their historic property to preserve continued access and availability of childcare slots. The current facility is listed on the National Registry of Historic Places and provides childcare for children ages 18 months through 5 years old, for 59 families, 62% of which are from Bangor. Staffing levels in physical plant have impacted their ability to expand capacity. While the facility can accommodate up to 10 classrooms, since the pandemic, they have been operating out of six spaces. Addressing the physical plant needs will allow the operation to become more sustainable and ensure compliance with life safety codes. Proposed building renovations include dormer, roof, electrical, retaining wall repairs, replacement of windows, sprinkler heads, and flooring. An investment in the facility will ensure compliance with life safety code, mitigate future utility costs, and remediate health hazards. This award is in support of the following: investment in facilities to support healthy childhood environments, investment in access to and expansion of affordable childcare.
We have a motion, we have a second. Questions, comments? Seeing none, order 23-316 will have passage. Before we get to the next item, I have a conflict of interest. So I will excuse myself. I was going to appoint Counselor Pelletier to chair in my absence.
23-317 Order Authorizing the Award of $2 million in State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds to Support Bangor Region YMCA's Construction of a New Facility on Downtown Bangor to Meet the Needs of Our Community, Counselor Spring.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move passage of order 23-317.
Second.
This order will authorize the award of $2 million in State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, AKA ARPA funds, to the Bangor Region YMCA to construct a new facility in Bangor as identified as part of the Penobscot County Subrecipient Grant Process. Current YMCA is outdated, severely overcrowded, has expansion constraints, and is expensive to operate. Without a new facility, the wise ability to serve Bangor and local area residents would suffer and impede their ability to serve as a community leader in supporting children, adults, and families in their lifelong quest for physical, emotional, and social wellness. The identified site for a new facility would revitalize the surrounding area within the downtown and is viewed as a critical piece in Bangor's economic development strategies. A new facility would, one, create up to 56 infant childcare slots; two, nearly triple its licensed early education program with availability of 120 toddlers and 113 pre-kindergarten students; three, double school-age programming capacity to 200 students; and four, include a comprehensive health center that will house mental health, mental, medical substance use prevention, and other health programs. This expansion of services would also result in the addition of 200 full and part-time jobs. This award is in support of the following: Investment in Facilities to Support Healthy Childhood Environments; Investment in Access to and Expansion of Affordable Childcare; and Investment in Expansion of Facilities and Access to Services for Disproportionately Impacted Communities. City is pleased to be able to work collaboratively with Penobscot County Commissioners to invest in projects that will enhance our community for years to come.
Thank you, Counselor Spring. We have a motion, we have a second. Questions and comments? Seeing none, order 23-317 will have passage.
23-318 Order Authorizing the Award of $400,000 in State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds to Heart of Maine United Way as matching funds to a similar award from Penobscot County to support the creation of the community in Bangor. Counselor Tremble.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Chairman, I have moved passage of order 23-318.
Second.
This will authorize the award of $400,000 in State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, ARPA, to Heart of Maine United Way to fund certain investments associated with the creation of the community, provided said funds are matched by Penobscot County, and the facility is located in Bangor. The community and nonprofit hub to fill important gaps in the nonprofit sector is a key strategy to advancing collaboration of social service providers and other nonprofits in Bangor in the region. A physical hub would be created to provide in-person and virtual support, including coaching and professional partners mentoring and networking. The initiative is designed to advance collaboration and efficiency of social service providers and other nonprofits in the region to create data-driven measurable results for their organizations and to support individuals and families within Bangor and the large region. This award is in support of investment in support of overcoming the negative economic impacts resulting from the pandemic in investments and access to facilities and services to disproportionately impacted communities. And as the previous award, this is also done in conjunction with the county. I'm assuming the county has agreed this was contingent on the county's participation. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct. That provided the information.
Right. Thank you.
We have a motion, we have a second. Questions, Counselor Davitt?
I would just say I'm really pleased with this award. I wish we funded it fully, but I'm really glad that we're giving what we are. I was unable to make it to the event that they had on Indigenous Peoples' Day on Monday night, but I heard it was really well-received, and I think it's just one small indicator of the worthiness of supporting this program, and I'm really glad they're here.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, order 23-318 will have passage.
23-319 Order Authorizing the Award of $648,000 in State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds to Wabanaki Public Health and Wellness in Support of the Creation of a Youth Center, Counselor Yakabaga.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move the passage of order 23-319.
Second.
Thank you. This order will authorize the award of $648,000 in State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, AKA ARPA funds, to Wabanaki Public Health and Wellness to fund certain investments within their youth center to be opened on Central Street. The Wabanaki Youth and Cultural Center will provide youth services for culturally focused and supportive programming for all youth. The center will be open to all families living in and visiting Bangor. The exhibit and gather spaces will be open 11 a.m. to 7 p.m. Age groups will range, but activities and programming will be planned for all ages and abilities, including after-school and day camp experiences, as well as after- including after-school and day camp experiences, as well as after-school space for tribal youth. The estimated investment for the youth space is one million, one-hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars. This award would fund building renovations and including the following features: bouldering and youth wall, cozy cave area, water wall exhibit, recreated petroglyph petroglyph wall, epoxy resin river, indoor forest, eagles, nest and youth climbing, climbing after-school care, art gallery wall, and commercial kitchen café. This award is in support of the following: investment in facilities to support healthy childhood environments, investment in access to facilities and services to disproportionately impacted communities.
We have a motion, we have a second. Comments? Counselor Davitt?
I just wanted to clarify, my previous comments, while I'm very happy that we are supporting the Heart of Maine United Way, were intended for the Wabanaki funding. I was like, I was looking ahead. So while yay, also Heart of Maine, but that was what that was intended for. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, order twenty-three dash three-one-nine will have passage. Wow, that brings us to the end of the meeting. Any comments from staff? Good night. Counselor Spring?
Good night.
Counselor Yakabaga?
Good night.
Counselor Tremble?
Good night.
Counselor Pelletier?
Good night.
Counselor Davitt?
I just wanted to say earlier in the evening, as we went through first, or consent and first readings and things, I think October seventeenth will be the night to watch for the planning board. If you want to send them caffeine ahead of time, it's going to be a really big and really important agenda. So for folks who like to follow along, things get to us at the end of these meetings. That's the place to watch and participate and see some good stuff go on. And good night.
I just want to say I'm really happy that Counselor Pelletier took over in my absence. I was really incredibly happy that she gave me back the gavel, so. So that being said, good evening and good night. We are adjourned.